I'd like to call the General Committee to Order. Would everybody please rise for the prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, through your grace, we gather together this evening asking for your guidance as we make decisions which affect our community and its children. As we enter our last quarter of the year, we pray for our students, their parents, and our teachers. Give all of them the energy and enthusiasm to end this school year of teaching and learning at the same level we experienced in August with the start of the new school year. These things we ask in your name.
Ms. Lamore, would you lead us in place, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Boche, a roll call, please.
Whoops. I'm flinging it around here. Mrs. Acevedo is not with us. Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mrs. Kraft.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Mrs. Lamore.
Yeah.
Mrs. Deisart.
Here.
Mr. England.
Yeah.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mrs. White.
Thank you, Ms. Boche. Okay, we'll move on to item number four, Super News. Mr. Barry Lamore, you step up to the plate, sir.
Good evening. Happy Super News. Our Super News team has good news happening all around. Jack Jackson was married and Alex Lapre Schneider had baby number two. So our Super News team is a busy place. So we have two of our schools featured tonight, plus a couple of little segments. Runs about 10 minutes. So if y'all don't have any questions, we'll just roll tape.
Thank you, sir.
Enjoy Super News.
And now from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for Super News.
Hi, I'm Alex Schneider.
And I'm Barry Lamore. And welcome to the Professional Development Center at Shawmaud Elementary School and to today's segment of Super News where we share all the good things happening in our school system.
We'll kick things off with some of the toe-tapping fun that was part of Guys and Dolls. This year, the Shawmaud High Voices staged a full musical production for the spring show. This oddball musical comedy is an award-winning classic that gambles with luck and love under the bright lights of Broadway and was a great showcase for our young performers.
Sit down, sit down, sit down, you're rocking the boat. Sit down, you're rocking the boat.
And while these talented performers were bringing music to life, students at Araby Elementary School were shining a light on their history and their heritage at the school's recent multicultural night. This school-wide evening celebration highlights the geography, the history, and of course, the music and food of all those that make up the Araby family.
Obrigado.
Ciao.
And now we'll go from Araby to AJ for an on-location report.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Craft, the school board member from District Six. You know, I taught at Andrew Jackson for many years, so this school is very near and dear to me. So I'm proud and excited to hear more about all the good things going on, as it is my pleasure to introduce the Super News team from Andrew Jackson Middle School, Ava and Evan.
Thanks, Mrs. Craft. Hello, and welcome to Andrew Jackson Middle School, home of the Colonels. I'm Ava.
And I'm Evan, and we are your hosts for today's Super News segment.
We'll get started with a sweet look at our recent Sweetheart Dance. Prior to the event, students dominated and voted for classmates to be chosen for the Sweetheart Court. This was the first semi-formal and easy dance AJ has held in several years and was quite successful with over 150 students in attendance. Congratulations to this year's court, King Montrell Cage, Queen Zoe Wool, Princesses Mia Jackson, Emma Domino, and Elena Young, and Princesses Evan, Jacob, Xander Wolf, and Dylan Fetter. It was a fun time for all.
And speaking of fun, let's talk about Fun Friday. Students who do the right thing and meet PBIS expectations are rewarded every two weeks with Fun Friday as a reward for their positive behavior. Students may choose an activity in which they would like to participate, ranging from sports, board, and video games to just reading or hanging in the courtyard. Fun Friday, which is new to AJ this year, is coordinated by our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Erin Larson. It's a great way to build a positive school culture.
And as February is Black History Month, our school celebrates its diversity for our Black History program. Speeches, poems, song, and dance were all part of the performance in a true celebration of our school community.
Also celebrating were the members of our Colonel Ed's dance team who recently competed at Shawmaud High School as a part of a special showcase. The team took top honors in high kick and placed fourth in group dance. Congrats to Ms. Cortez and our talented performers.
AJ also showed school spirit when it took first place in New Orleans area in JCPenney's Sales for School Spirit competition. This is the third year of the competition, and AJ is the first school in St. Bernard Parish to win. Our principal, Mrs. Lacherty, was presented with a trophy as well as a coveted coffee pot for the faculty lounge. Nice job, everyone.
Well, that's about all the time we have for today. But before we leave, I just wanted to give a shout out to my co-host for today, an AJ Student of the Year, Ava Valente. Congrats to you, Ms. Valente.
Thanks. It's a great honor, and I'm honestly so grateful for the recognition.
She's an honest, honest student at AJ. I guess that makes her a Colonel of Truth.
I guess. Thanks for watching, and we'll see you soon. Bye.
Nice job, Andrew Jackson, and congratulations. Would also like to give kudos to the St. Bernard Rotary Club and all those who took part in the 18th Annual Spelling Bee. Our school system was well-represented at the event. In fact, our retired teachers team took first place in the bee, and one of our school board teams placed second. The event was even more special this year as the Rotary announced that proceeds will help fund a scholarship in the name of Dr. Hugh Kraft, a longtime Rotary member and an important part of our school family. Over 20 teams participated in this good time for a good cause.
And speaking of the Rotary, here's another one of its esteemed members, our very own Shawn Warner.
Thanks, Alex. And I'd like to mention that Gulf Coast Bank placed third in the spelling bee this year. And to the one team that was so upset that they misspelled Armageddon, it's okay. It's not the end of the world or anything. Anyway, it is now my pleasure to introduce our next Super News segment. Please welcome the dynamic duo from Shawmaud Elementary.
Hello, I'm Zaylee.
And I'm Beau. Welcome to Shawmaud Elementary School, the home of the Vikings.
Our school offers so much for all of our students here. Can you believe that we have 14 clubs at our school? Our clubs range from sports like dance, twirl, cheer, and sports clinic to the performing arts like art, drama, bell choir, and chorus. We also have other fun clubs such as Garden Club and K Kids where students help the community. There's so much to do at CES, and we are thankful for all of our club sponsors.
Our teachers also make reading fun with many different incentives at school to encourage us to read. We have the AR program where we read books, take computerized tests on them, and earn prizes for reaching a certain amount of points.
We also have school-wide challenges to reach classroom goals. Each class is given a specific amount of ARP points they must collectively earn. There's a chart that is hung up for all the students to see that shows each class's progress. It is like a race to meet your goal. Every class that meets its goal by the deadline wins a treat.
And this year, we offer a reading club exclusive to 5th graders. This reading club is called Taco Tuesday. Students are invited to stay after school on Tuesdays to eat tacos and read. Hey, Zaylee, did you hear the joke about the taco shell? Never mind, it was too corny.
In other news, did you know that our school is the only elementary school in St. Bernard to have Playworks? It's an organization that helps kids stay active and build valuable life skills through play. At recess, all students have real choices in how they play, which helps them feel included, setting a positive tone for all.
The Playworks Junior Coach Leadership Program puts recess culture in the hands of some of our upper elementary students called junior coaches. These junior coaches also volunteer their time to help with younger grade levels. Our Playworks coach, Cochery, is very involved in our school community and even helped sponsor an athletic club. Through this program, our school has become closer as a community and a happier place to learn and play.
And speaking of play, did you know why Cinderella was terrible in sports? Because she always runs away from the ball.
And on that note, I guess we need to run to, thanks for joining us today for our Super News segment from Shawmaud Elementary School, and we'll see you next time. Bye.
Thank you, Vikings, for that report. We'd also like to congratulate the coaches and players that are a part of the Shawmaud High School Ladies Basketball Team. Undefeated in district play and with over 25 wins and a great playoff run as the 12th seed was something to be really proud of. Nice job, Owls.
And now we'll go from hoops to health as we visit Smith Elementary School. The school recently received a two-year grant as part of Smarter Lunch Rooms. The aim of this program is to educate students on ways to improve the consumption of healthy food and to reduce waste in the cafeteria.
So we received a grant from Team Nutrition Louisiana, and we received 2,500 this year and will receive 2,500 next year for smarter classrooms. With the money, we've already purchased a tower garden that we display in our school, and our students are also receiving healthier snacks and lunch.
And speaking of cafeteria, several of our board members took part in National Nutrition Month, which includes School Breakfast Week. Here, we see some of our board members who joined our cafeteria staff to help serve our students, emphasizing the importance of making informed food choices and developing healthy eating habits.
Well, that's about all the time we have for today, but before we go, we wanted to
let the Super News roll.
congratulate the members of the Davies Pelican Players for its recent stage production that Bye.
Barry, y'all do a fantastic job, you know?
was truly a celebration of movie music.
And I know you're gonna be busy the next couple of months, huh?
Yeah. But Alex writes all the jokes, so it probably won't be as funny in the future. We'll have to say...
I knew you had a hand in that.
Yeah.
Thank you again. Anything for Ms. Lamore? Okay, thank you, sir. Item number five, Ms. Lamore asked to have this on the agenda. Ms. Lamore, will you take it, please?
Yes. Agenda item number five, we have a library board representative extending an invitation to teachers regarding the new Mira Public Library. And tonight, we have Mrs. Patrice Cusamano here to share some information. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I wanted to start by thanking Ms. Boche and the school board for allowing the library to be housed in the 9th Grade Academy over these last several years. By way of history, we were evicted from the old library building when the parish decided to repurpose it after Katrina. And we really had no place to go. We were in a trailer up near Carolyn Park Playground for a while. And there were some board members that wanted to hurry up and build a big library then. And not knowing what our population was gonna do at that time, I think we were around 25,000 people at that point, some other board members, myself included, said, "Let's hold off and let's see what parish is gonna do, because when we build this library, it's gonna be the last one this parish is ever gonna build. So let's do it right and do it as big as we need it to be." So I took over as president of the library board of control, I think, last year, and one of the first things I did was make a motion that we pull the trigger and look into building a new library. So we now have architects under contract. They signed, the parish signed the contract this week. It's Beasley Morlier out of Lafayette and Mathis Pierre from New Orleans. They've collaborated. And we've hired a lady named, well, the architects have, Danelle Washington, who is a nationally-known library consultant. So the reason for me being here is to ask that you please disseminate the news that we're gonna start building a library, but before we do, we wanna get the public's input. This is their money that's being spent. We've allotted $10 million to build the new library. It's going to be on East Judge Perez between Judy and Bartolo, and land already belongs to the parish. And the library board had bought that several years back. So we're gonna clear what we need to clear, leave wooded what we need to leave wooded. And Ms. Washington is very big on surets. Everybody knows that word from after Katrina. We had lots of surets. So she wants to have a public forum. We're gonna have three forums, but the public forum is gonna be on March 26th at 6:00 at the parish council chambers. And we want people to come, and I particularly want our teachers to come and our parents of our kids to come, give us their ideas, their hopes, their dreams. We have tremendous children's program at the library now. Janet Perez does a fabulous job. And we wanna expand that. We wanna have a great children's area with a stage and all the bells and whistles. We wanna have a good teen area to attract the teenagers to come and hang out at the library. So we're playing with a whole bunch of ideas. It's gonna be much more than what the library used to be, where, you know, you went in and you checked your voice at the door. You know, we want it to be a fun place to visit. We hope to maybe have a coffee shop and things like that, to have the adults come and have coffee and sit down and relax. Lots of computers, lots of books to check out, lots of videos. I think we do more videos than anything that we check out now than actual hardcover books. I personally like to hold a book in my hand, but I'm old. So with that being said, I just would like y'all to please help us, get this news out, get the teachers there, get the students there, the parents there. Everyone is welcome. And we're gonna have another one on the day after, which will be at the library following the children's program. And then we're gonna have one for the library board itself to put in our ideas and all. So, you know, people may come with an idea and they may not see it come to fruition, but we're gonna, you know, we're really interested in what the public has to say, because we want this to be a fun place for the parish to come and enjoy. So I thank y'all again for allowing us to be squatters. And, you know, as y'all know from building schools, they're not built overnight, so we'll still be there for a little while. But I really appreciate allowing us to be there all this time. It's been a wonderful relationship. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question. I know this has been a long time coming, and I'm excited for the library board. I know it's preliminary. Any idea of a timeline, if you had to put one out there?
Well, since we can't even make up our mind whether to clear the whole piece of land or just part of it, you know, I think it's gonna be a longer on our process. But when we get these ideas, then the consultant, and what this lady does is, she's an expert. She will work with the architects in designing how the library will flow. And once we decide that, then we'll know how to orient the building on the property. We're thinking we're probably gonna enter from Side Street, not from Judge Perez, because we don't wanna have to get DOTD involved with traffic studies and all that thing, all those kinds of things. So I'm saying two years? I mean, does that sound about right? 18 months to two years? I know, you see, I'm not...
It's on the contract.
I don't have this legal whip, you know? I don't have any whip, because it's a parish building. But, you know, they are allowing us to have some input since we are the library board of control. But we really have very little control. So I'd like to see it up as quickly as possible, but, you know, you start surveying and then you find, we don't think we have any wetlands, we don't think we have any of those kind of issues. So I think once we just decide, I think it's 22,000 square feet, something like that. So once we decide how it's gonna sit on the property, then we'll decide how much we wanna clear, if we wanna clear all the way back to the 40 Arkin. And then from there, it's just gonna be a matter of laying out the... I would like to see it stay a one-story. You need less personnel when you have a one-story. You don't need elevators, that type of thing. It will have to be raised, we already know that. Whether it can be raised, if we're gonna have any parking underneath, I mean, that's all still up in the air. So once the architects know what the parish wants and what the people want, then they'll start their design. And from there, we'll go with what it's gonna look like and how it's gonna flow. So hopefully, we won't have any boulders thrown in our way, and it'll be a smooth process.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other questions? All right, thank you so much. Thank you for your leadership on the library board and for the invitation and for your leadership and volunteer work in the other organizations. We caught you in Super News tonight volunteering at Araby Elementary. So we really appreciate your support.
That was a colonist function.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lamore. Move on to item number six, it's educational. Mrs. Craft. Number six. This is for the testing, 2019 testing. Mary?
Turn it on, Ms. Lamore.
That's all right.
Good evening. Before I take a moment to go over the testing schedule with you for the spring, I would like to take this chance to really give a big thank you to the teachers, the parents, the students, the administrators, who've really worked very diligently all year to not just master the state standards, but also to master the computer skills that'll be required for them to take these state tests, because as you remember, students in grades five through high school will be taking their state assessments on the computer. So they've worked very hard all year, working with their standards and also mastering, and the Chromebooks that were in the budget really have made a big difference in giving them the experience throughout the year. So that's been a big learning curve for many people, and everyone has jumped in and really put a big effort into that. Even our English Language Learner students who are taking the English Language Proficiency test, that test actually started February 4th, the window opened, and it closes this Friday. Those tests are on computer. And our LEAP Connect students who used to take the Law 1 assessment, their test is also on the computer. So all of our students are taking their tests on computer. And it's been a learning curve, but I just applaud again the effort that's been put in all year, because as we all know, the students put the effort in, they learn the standards all year, and it's that one test session that decides in the state's eyes on how to judge the school. So a lot of effort is also put into the administration of the test, and a lot of time is. I'd also like to commend the school, the teachers and administrators and the counselors who work so hard on making sure the students have a positive testing experience and can really shine and show what they've learned all year. So what I put together for you is this calendar, it's a back and front calendar. And as I mentioned, the English Language Learners and LEAP Connect students finish testing this Friday, and then in April, beginning with April 4th, in yellow, the yellow color code that you'll see, students in 5th through 8th grade will take the LEAP 2025 on computer, beginning April 4th and stretching on through April 11th with makeups on April 12th. And middle school and 5th grade students will all take the same tests on those same days. The blue color code is gonna be the high school testing. They have laid out for you, the window for high school test opens on April 5th, and it stretches through May 17th, and we take every single day of the window to take all of those tests with one makeup day. Additionally, in the blue, I've given you the dates for the advanced placement tests as well. The pink is 3rd and 4th grade still do take a paper-based version of the LEAP 2025. It's the same type of test that 5th through 8th grade takes, but it is on paper. And they will test beginning on April 29th and 30th, ending through May 3rd with makeups May 6th and 7th. At the very bottom of the second page in blue, today was the ACT initial test date at Shawmaud High and at Raleigh, and we had a fantastic day of testing. They did a mock test in the fall. The teachers and the students were well-prepared, and we really had a good day of testing. The accommodated testing window for students who take the test in small chunks, I'm giving to you here, and then the makeup date for anyone who missed today will be April 2nd. So this is the testing window. Like you say, you'll see it'll stretch from April through the last day of testing, May 17th for the AOC for high school.
Thank you, Ms. Lametta. That's very good. I think this is especially interesting calendar. I think it has a lot to do with your math background of graphics.
The visuals helped me. And I did just forget to mention in the bottom right of the first page, I do have the dates for you that the Academic Games team will be in competition and the date that they'll return. So I do have that for you.
Any questions?
I just wanna make a comment. As you notice, for the bulk of the students, we begin testing April 4th. We end testing May 17th. We're looking at two months out of the school year that primarily is focused on statewide assessments that we're giving to all of our kids, an entire two-month period that does not even include, as Ms. Lametta mentioned, our English Language Learners, where the window opens on February, what was the date? February 4th. And our severely disabled students, formerly Law 1, they're called Louisiana Connect students now, the window opened April, I mean, February 4th, because it takes a long period of time to adequately test them. So our severely disabled students are significantly disabled students are sitting at a computer taking these tests with some accommodations and assistance, but it takes us from February all the way through May to successfully assess and test all of these kids. So that's almost half the school year we're spending with the English Language Learners and significantly disabled children, testing them. You know, we're all interested in accountability, and we're all interested in how well our students are doing and what they're learning, but it just, when you see something visually like this, it just brings into question how much learning is taking place and how much assessment is taking place when our administrators and teachers and all of our school personnel are focused for an entire two months on this testing window. Just a little comment there.
Too much.
Anyone else? Thank you, and we are all really, I think, impressed with this. I'd like to give you a round of applause.
Good evening. Thank you.
I just wanna mention, Ms. Lametta and Mr. Granberry have a lot in common. Mr. Granberry color codes everything also, but he does it on tablets, where he writes it and then color codes. Ms. Lametta does it on the latest technology. That's the difference in our generations here.
Item number seven.
And now Dr. Ravielli will deal with our Head Start program and tell us what's expected.
Well, good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come before you tonight. I've come to present and seek your approval for our Head Start continuation application for next year, for the 2019, 2020 school year. I'll be meeting with our policy council on March 19th to also review the application with them and ask for its approval. Ms. Christina Doty is our policy council president, and Ms. White is our newly-appointed school board representative on the policy council, so welcome, and she'll be attending that meeting also. You have a set of handouts in front of you labeled Item 7A. They include the key parts of the grant. For the 1920 school year, we'll begin to vote funding toward preserving our universal pre-K program for all of our four-year-olds who live in the parish. As a reminder to you, we use LA4, Title 1, 8G, the Education Excellence Fund, IDEA, Head Start, and local dollars to support our universal preschool program. We'll be speaking specifically about the Head Start application tonight. We have Head Start classrooms on each of our elementary sites, with the exception of Lacoste, where our pre-K classes there are funded through other grant dollars, so we have pre-K on every elementary school site. Speaking directly about the Head Start application, if you take a look at Handout 7A, we're funded to serve 112 students, the same as last year. The federal contribution from Head Start is $890,694. This includes a $15,226 total increase that the federal government sent our way. Since our employees are already on the district salary schedule, those dollars will go toward salaries for next year. $15,221 of the $890,694 must be obligated for training and technical assistance. The remaining dollars go toward the other items listed, salaries, benefits, supplies, child liability insurance, local travel, professional development activities, and field trips. The next several pages in that part of the handout describe the actual detailed line of...
You have a set of handouts in front of you labeled Item 7A. They include the key parts of the grant. For the 1920 school year, we'll begin to vote funding toward preserving our universal pre-K program for all of our four-year-olds who live in the parish. As a reminder to you, we use LA 4, Title I, 8G, the Education Excellence Fund, IDEA, Head Start, and local dollars to support our universal preschool program. We'll be speaking specifically about the Head Start application tonight. We have Head Start classrooms on each of our elementary sites, with the exception of Lacoste, where our pre-K classes there are funded through other grant dollars. So, we have pre-K on every elementary school site. Speaking directly about the Head Start application, if you take a look at Handout 7A, we're funded to serve 112 students, the same as last year. The federal contribution from Head Start is $890,694. This includes a $15,226 total increase that the federal government sent our way. Since our employees are already on the district salary schedule, those dollars will go toward salaries for next year. $15,221 of the $890,694 must be obligated for training and technical assistance. The remaining dollars go toward the other items listed: salaries, benefits, supplies, child liability insurance, local travel, professional development activities, and field trips. The next several pages in that part of the handout describe the actual detailed line items for our budget categories. It's in the same format that you've seen the last couple of years. Everything that we submit now is submitted electronically on the Head Start website. So, as you go through that 7A, you can see the various categories that are listed there. Now, if you go to take a look at Handout 7B, that's the narrative portion of our grant. And it's broken down into two sections required by the federal government. With the move to the five-year application process, the baseline application narrative we were required to provide three years ago was a 19-page document. For this year and next year, we'll only need to submit an abbreviated continuation application narrative. We only need to include any additions or deletions or revisions to our program's goals and objectives, as well as any changes to the subsections. In Section 1, we provide updates to our seven goals that we have listed there, very little change in those goals. It just shows our progress toward that, and we've kept those goals because they tend to hit those things that are important to the preparation of kids getting ready for kindergarten. We've also submitted a chart showing the progress our students have made through the middle of the year. That chart is going to show what they, you know, we test, we screen our kids in September, then we screen them again in January. And so, this is the increase from the beginning of the year to mid-year. In Section 2 on Page 9, you'll see the budget narrative explaining the breakdown for each of the budget categories. At the end of the narrative, you'll see how the school system meets the 20% in-kind contribution required by the federal government. And that shows, you know, we're required, the local is required to provide, to have an in-kind contribution of at least 20%. So, with that, that's a quick overview of the application. I have a couple more things to talk about after this, but are there any questions about what, and I know you've quickly gone through it, are there any questions you have about the application? And once we finish with the questions, we're going to need to have you vote for approval and send it to the regular board.
No questions, please? No comments, no questions?
Ms. Craft? At this time, I would just like to make a motion that we accept the application for Head Start continuation.
And send it to the full board.
And send it to the full board.
And a second by Ms. Lamore.
Okay. Thank you. You had to vote?
We've got to take a vote.
Now, if you'll all press your buttons green or red. This is my first opportunity to speak before the board. I'm really struggling.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay. Just a few more things before I close out. You recall, well, most of you who are on the board recall, I present usually in November and then again in March. And at the November meeting, we kind of give you the annual report from the previous year, and we talk about the whole year's growth. But one of the things they like us to do in Head Start is to keep you updated on our students' progress. And so, that's the next couple of pages. 7C just gives you an idea. It focuses on the seven major components that we assess kids on, our preschoolers on: physical language, social emotional, cognitive, literacy, math. And so, those seven components are things that we measure. We'll look at them in September, and we'll look again in January, and then we'll do a final screening at the end of the year, assessment at the end of the year. So, those three pages, it's broken down by component, it's broken down by gender, it's broken down by race, and so, you've seen some, you know, some significant progress. We have a ways to go, and we're working diligently to improve. Usually, by the end of the year, we've seen some remarkable growth. So, you know, we'll continue to work at that. One of the other things that I want to make, just remind you of, is that every month, as a board member, you're presented our enrollment report, our health and physical report, our financial report, is the big thing, and then food services, Joanie provides you with the menu. So, that's just another thing I want to make sure you remember as you move forward. Lastly, Handout 7D is a copy of our press release that Ms. Schneider distributed in late February, referencing our upcoming preschool registration for next year. It'll begin March 20th, which is fast approaching. You'll notice on that press release that registration is staggered, so it's not this, oh, you've got to camp out and make sure you get in. We stagger the registration according to the alphabet, and then we'll continue to take registration through the course of the summer. So, that's going to begin on the 20th. We encourage parents to either download a copy of the application from our website, or they can pick up an application here at the front office. So, in closing, I'd just, I'd like to thank Ms. Skellinger, our program coordinator, our entire management team, teachers, and parent professionals who are responsible for all the success that we've made in not only our Head Start program, but in all of our pre-K programs. And then, I'd also like to thank you all, because since its inception back in 86, 87, you know, we've had board support throughout the course of the years, and I think it pays off as you look at the progress that our kids make. So, any other questions? If not...
Okay, Mr. Long?
Briefly, Dr. Rep., has new students come on board during the year? Do they get put on a waiting list, or?
No, for the most part, we're able to meet all of our kids who come. Now, you know, we're tied to, in preschool, the max, for the most part, is 20 per classroom. So, I'll just use this as an example. Let's just say there are four classes at Araby. So, that means that there are 80 kids. We will, if we're at maximum, we will offer them the opportunity to go to a nearby site. And so, that comes into play, but not so much this year. We've pretty much been able to maintain openings at all our sites.
So, you have a maximum 20 students?
Right. And now, those are federal regulations, as well as LA 4 regulations, any of the state regulations that we have, two adults with a max of 20. And so, you know, we're not going to open up another section for when we're at the 82 mark.
Okay. So, if you get 21, 22, it's a no-go.
Can't do it, right?
No-go, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? We were saying earlier that if you like what you see, you'll want your children in our four-year-old program, and it is free, and we welcome all of those people. And those students that come to Head Start have a better opportunity to be successful in their schooling in later years. Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Ravielli.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craft. Item number eight, personnel changes from March 2019. Ms. Voucher?
Okay. In your package, you've got changes that we have made since the last board meeting. I know that Ms. Dyson may want to comment first on some of the retirees, but once we get through that, the last item on the leave without pay request has to be voted on by the board. The other pieces of information, or for information only, but the leave without request does need the approval.
Ms. Dyson.
Thank you, Mr. England. Yes, it's very sad to look at the retirements list. We have a wealth of experience and expertise in each and every one of these individuals. Mr. Michael P. Shaw, I mean, he's been a wonderful asset to our school system. Ms. Lisa Demarest, she's been a wonderful asset to our school system, from Shellman Middle now to Trist. Reynolds Rigney has been wonderful with the ROTC program. And Mr. Kenny Kurth with our Gifted and Talented Program. I mean, you know, it's just going to be an incredible loss for all four of these retirees. And we also have two retirees under support personnel, Ms. Marie Myers, who is a manager at cafeteria manager, and Tony Roberts, who is a power educator for many years. So, you know, it's a great loss that we have so many wonderful individuals who will be retiring. We will miss them, and again, their knowledge, their expertise, and their love that they've given to our students. And we wish them a happy retirement, but we will definitely miss each and every one of these individuals. And we thank them for their many years of wonderful service to our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson, and touche to them, because they did a great, fantastic job, these individuals, and it's a lot of years of expertise for our school system. Also, what we have to do now, we have to have a motion to require for Michelle Dyson from Davies Elementary requires board action with leave without pay.
Ms. England, I'd like to move that we accept the leave without pay for Dr. Michelle Dawson.
Okay. Have a motion by Ms. Dyson, second by Ms. Lamore. Any questions?
She has her second baby.
Really? That's great. Congratulations.
We congratulate her.
Well, that's beautiful.
And she's a wonderful teacher also.
Okay. Allen, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
And we wish her well. I'm sorry, Ms. Voucher.
Yeah, and I just wanted to mention and echo the retirements, too. And in, I guess, in the interest of brevity, I mean, I could sit here and talk about each one of these people tonight. Mike P. Shaw, who graduated from Shellman High, went off to the military, had an outstanding career, came back, began with us at the Ol Nova, and then for years now, has been at Shellman High School. I mean, he's just a tremendous educator. I don't know what else to say about Ms. Demarest. I mean, she has been like a rock for so many years, and has done an incredible job. Our ROTC, head of our ROTC, he's done a really good job through these last few years. And then, what can I say about Kenny Kurth?
Right.
I mean, I don't know. He's everywhere. I fully intend to make sure, and I think we have an inside, like, sort of like in a little inside line with his wife, but he's got to come back and do a lot of volunteering with us, I know. And I know he will, because he's an outstanding educator and a wonderful, wonderful person as well. And Ms. Marie, who's our cafeteria manager at Shellman Elementary, just the motherly type, outstanding. And Tony Roberts has just been tremendous at Shellman High School. So, these are six people that I know that everybody is replaceable, but it's going to be very hard as we move forward. I guess we bring all the young ones in, huh? But anyway, I just wanted to wish them well and thank them for their outstanding service to our school system.
Thank you, Ms. Voucher. Anyone else? Going to item number nine, Mr. Egan?
Next thing, your agenda.
We did vote, huh? Yeah, we voted.
Next thing is property insurance renewal. Mr. Clements and Mr. Clements.
Okay. In your packets, you have premiums for the renewal of our property insurance policy for April 1st, 2019 through March 31st, 2020. And as Mr. Egan said, with us today, from Clements Insurance Services are our friends, Mr. Richie Clements and Master Timothy Clements. You have a couple of exhibits under the cover page. The first one will show you breakdown of the premium for this year. The following page will show you a comparison. I'm sorry.
I think he was telling Mr. Egan.
I'm sorry.
I think that you said...
Oh. Okay.
I didn't have much more to say, anyway.
The next page is a comparison with prior years. This year's premium will be $1,321,803. You will see that's approximately $66,000 increase over the prior year, or a 5% increase. And I'm sure Mr. Clements will discuss the reasons for that increase. But you'll notice that in the proposal, several, as we have in the past, we have layered coverage, because it's difficult for one carrier to cover the entirety of our losses. So, the first $50 million will be covered by three different carriers, splitting it evenly, both for all risks and name-stalling coverage. We will have $30 million of coverage for name-stalling, and all of our properties will be covered for all of the perils. The reason for the $30 million name-stalled coverage, as you recall, is because that's our requirement to be covered in order to be eligible for FEMA coverage than the excess in event of a name-stall. And those perils are, name-stall is excluded from the regulations. We also have the renewal of our boiler insurance, $7,800. And at the bottom, it shows the increase from last year. Last year's premium, $1.255 million, or 5.32% increase. I'm just going to sign when Mr. Clements comes to discuss the process they've gone through.
Well, this year, we hit the market really, really hard this year, not that we haven't in the past. But we went to a couple of different brokers, which we've had a relationship with one of our brokers forever. And we found out that they're doing a great job for us. We needed to retrench that, make sure that they're getting the best opportunity that they have for our business. This year is unfortunate that prices are firming up. You know, in the past, we've been here and said, oh, we're going down, we've got to decrease again, we've got to decrease again, we've got to decrease again. Well, the market is finally turning. I'm sure, I don't need to tell you all the catastrophes that went on last year, the wildfires, Hurricane Michael, Hurricane Florence, flooding, worldwide tsunamis, and just everything. Because when we go out for the insurance, it's worldwide exposures that we're up against, not just those in the United States, and especially not even just Louisiana. Even though our experience has really been good, really good, we're still coastal. And so, companies do what they call modeling to see if an event would come through, what would happen. And of course, here we are, right here. So, those things are playing into our hands. Companies are retrenching, and really, I know it sounds funny, but they're concentrating on profit, which, you know, sounds funny, because who wouldn't want to concentrate on profit? But in the past, they could offset that profit with interest rates or investments that they had. Well, those investments are not turning the money that they used to. So, consequently, they got to get the money from the insurance. We looked for some different aspects to bring to the insurance, to maybe make the premiums cheaper, but they would have caught deductibles to go up, or coverages to go down. And it took us this long to get here, to get the correct coverage and terms. So, the administration decided the state put what we have on that now.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Joe? Just briefly, Mr. Clements, am I reading this right? It went up $175,000 last year and $66,000 this year, the premium? Is that...
Yes, sir. It did go up last year, yes. Yes, from 2017, 2018 to 2018 to 2019, it did go up $174,000, our premium last year. So, it's going up another 60s.
So, in a two-year period, we really, the premiums really have jumped.
And it's like Mr. Clements said, primarily to all the experience. See, in these premiums, it's not just our experience, but it's experience of the market as a whole. So, when other people suffer calamities, it goes into the mix of our premiums as well.
One thing, my, the rate that we charge, you know, the price per thousand dollars, that rate has steadily gone down since 2007. It was over a dollar before, and now it's like under 30 cents. So, we still are even prices lower than, I think, 2013 or '14.
And we've added some, we've added some properties, right?
Yes, sir. We did have...
In the last few years.
Yes, we did. And another component of the increase this year is we did add the Trist extension, new wing at Trist Middle School, to our property values as well. So, that is a part of the increase as well.
So, overall, we're not doing too bad?
No, sir.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Yeah, I think in, from seventeen to eighteen, we also added Miro Elementary.
Yes, sir. That is true.
So, that was an additional fifty million in coverage.
Correct, yes, sir. That was the big addition.
Forty-five million. Sorry, the math teacher's correcting me. I had a question. Under the name storm, it says thirty thousand dollars, five percent value of building at location, ten million?
It's the deductible for name storms, and correct me if I'm saying anything, it's thirty million dollars of coverage total for name storms.
Okay.
And the deductible is five percent of the loss, with a minimum of five hundred thousand. So, the deductible starts at five hundred thousand, but if five percent of the loss exceeds five hundred thousand, then it'll be whatever five percent of the loss is, up to ten million dollars.
Only on the buildings that are damaged at a location, though.
Right.
So, it's not like they take five percent of our four hundred and eighty-five million.
Correct.
And we were fortunate enough last year to get that capped at ten million.
Okay.
And I'd like to add one other thing, if I could. I'm sorry.
I think I understand that. Yeah, I'm fine. Thank you.
One other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, it's not included in the exhibit because it's not part of our recommendation, but also, we received this afternoon a quote for terrorism coverage, which is offered to us every year for that. We usually own the LSOs of it because it's such a slight risk, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that it was offered, and the coverage for a hundred million dollars in coverage would be seventeen thousand dollars. And for fifty thousand, million dollars in coverage would be eight thousand dollars. That would be on top, because terrorism is usually an exclusion from the insurance policies. Like I said, it's something we really did do in the past, but it's just, bringing to your attention, it is an exclusion, and that coverage is available. We want to avail ourselves of it.
And what they call...
It would cover acts of terrorism.
I know the act of terrorism, but as far as, you know, for somebody's death or anything of that nature? Or just the building?
It's a property.
Just the building, just the property owner.
Somebody came into your school building and blew it up.
Right.
As a terrorist, jihadist, or whatever terrorist would be. National terrorist, too. It's not just, you know, the kids from West Cleveland Square doing terrorist stuff, like, where other? They're doing other things. You know, my kids. But it has to be national terrorists.
Okay. Do we have anyone else? Ms. Dyson?
Thank you, Mr. Egan. The inspection thing, I don't recall seeing that in prior. Can you explain that to us, please?
We've had it some in the past. We had a little one last year, it was a smaller amount. But this year, they said that they're charging that fee, it's a pass-through fee to us, of course, that they're going to go and they're going to do one-third of the schools. So, they're going to start doing that every time. That's more of the company re-entrenching, making sure they have the correct risk, making sure that there's safeguards in place.
Is that just a quote? Give you a quote, or is that per incident?
That's the cost of the inspections for the entire...
It's a one-time...
One-time charge, flat.
To get their insurance?
It's an inspection fee, which they come out to look at the property and say, oh, look, your fire extinguishers are not current, or you have a hazardous material over here that really needs to be isolated. And of all the recommendations I've ever had in the past, we passed them with flying colors. But...
So, that's a one-time, that's a one-time fee for all the schools?
For one of the ones, for all the schools that they'll inspect. They won't inspect all the schools.
They do it on a test basis. They look at, they look at a third of the schools, and if they see there's no problems, they assume the rest of the schools also, and it's not condition as a...
Okay.
We argued that point very strongly this year. I thought it was uncalled for.
Very, especially if we're going to spend this amount of money on insurance, and we're giving, you know, we're going with their company to ensure our properties, you would think, you know, that...
I wish it was the upper hand.
That's just, yeah, right. And I know you said that you shopped, you know, for the prices on all these insurance. So, you went to several different insurance brokers and got prices for each and every category that you see before.
The main response that we got was, you only got a five percent increase? We can't compete. That was the greatest response. We did follow the list, David, of the people that we did go to and the responses that we did get.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I have a motion that we accept the recommendation for our property insurance.
I'll move. We accept.
By Ms., moved by Ms. Lamoyne. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Campbell. Any further questions or comments? Please vote your machines.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, as usual. Good job.
You know, we're available if anybody has questions and asking how to get involved.
Thank you.
Move on to item number ten. Sefanis, Ms. Dyson?
Thank you, Mr. England. Next item on the agenda is a request for permission to advertise for bid for the Official Journal.
The next several items are just request permission to bid, annual bids. First one is Official Journal. We are required to contract with an Official Journal to publish all the minutes and advertisements of the school system. So, this is our regular advertisement for that service.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Campbell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Warner. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Next item is a request for permission to advertise for vehicle painting and repairs. This is a yearly request also.
Yes, ma'am. This is an annual bid for repairing and painting buses and vehicles that are damaged during the course of the year. And again, this is just a request permission to advertise.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion or questions? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay, next item is a request for permission to advertise for bid gasoline, diesel, and other fluids. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Smith, Mr. Long, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion or questions? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Next item is a request permission to advertise for paper, cleaning, and custodial supplies. Is there a motion on the floor at this time? There's a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. White. Any discussion or questions?
No.
There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Next item is a request permission to advertise for bus parts.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? Mr. Warner?
Mr. Fernandez, anybody interested, a vendor, anybody interested, they could find the specs for these bids on our website, right?
Yes, sir. We'll be posted on our website.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warner. Anyone else? Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay, next item is a request permission to advertise for RFP for reading and language arts software. Mr. Fernandez?
Yes, ma'am. We have a special guest star to help represent this, Ms. Leanne Holton. This is for the software for her curriculum in elementary schools.
And sometimes we use some of it in the middle schools, too.
In the middle schools as well, but she is more knowledgeable about the details of that.
Okay. We have to, every few years, we have to put out bids for new materials, and it's time to put out a bid for two of our reading programs that we use, software-wise. The first one we use now is Lexia. That's the one where the kids move at their own level, and it's a skill development building, but it also builds their comprehension. And the second one that we presently use is Renaissance, which includes AR, and also STAR reading, which assesses the kids' levels. So, we have to put out a bid, a request for proposals now, for either to use these programs again or to replace them, depending on what happens with the bids. So, that's what I'm asking for.
So moved.
There's a motion, there's a motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second? By Ms. Lamoyne. Any questions? I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When's the last time we purchased Lexia in the Renaissance?
We purchase it every year, but we haven't put out a bid in, it must be a little bit over, what, three years, Ms. Vouchier?
Problem.
Yeah, because you have to put out a bid every so often.
A multi-year proposal.
Oh, it's a multi-year proposal, right.
Yes, we want to put out a bid this year for, if we, whatever we get to get it for the first year, and then for subsequent years after that. That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, because what happens from a curriculum standpoint, you have to have continuity with children, with teachers, and training and such. So, when we look at materials that we wish to purchase that will meet the needs of our students, then we, as we put out these requests for these proposals and grant whichever software package, or instructional textbook, or whatever we're going to use, it's got to be in a multi-year package. Otherwise, we can't keep changing every year.
Right.
It's cost prohibitive, and from continuity of, from an educational purpose, it's, it would be ridiculous.
Right. So, it's the same programs that we've been using, but just updated, correct?
It's not really an update. It's more like you have to put out, it's a state law that you have to put out a request for proposals. So, we have to advertise to see if anybody else offers these, or if these are the only suppliers that would offer what we're asking.
Okay. And we would then approve it for, say, a three-year period or a five-year period, and then we would go out again and look. So, you might change at the end of that five-year period.
Right.
But we don't want to do this every year.
Right.
So, that's the reason for a multi-year proposal.
I know my grandchildren use the Lexia program every day.
I was looking at you, because I know they use that all the time.
They get on my computer. I need to use Lexia.
It's really helped them build their comprehension and their skills.
It's a very good program.
And the AR program is like amazing, that we've had for years. And that goes all the way to twelfth grade, you know, that we use it. So, I'll be back at the next meeting, but this is the first meeting I have to attend to ask for permission to go out and bid.
Okay, so, there was a motion on the floor.
Right.
By Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Lamoyne. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, well, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item number sixteen, Superintendent's recommendations, Ms. Vouchier?
At our regular meeting, we've asked two groups, well, a group and then an individual to attend. First of all, the individual, and I know Mr. England has the award, but one of our students from Andrew Jackson Middle School received second place in the state at the Louisiana School Board Association Conference for all the art exhibits. So, we're very happy, and Mr. England and the other board members accepted that on her behalf, and we're going to ask the student to come at our regular meeting and be recognized, and y'all can make the presentation at that point. We're also going to be having our academic games team come. There'll be a little reception for them prior to the meeting at five o'clock. The former sponsor for that team has, had withdrawn their sponsorship, and we're very fortunate that the High Flying Owl Fund, when they heard about that, stepped up to the plate and offered to finance a trip to the tune of six thousand dollars. So, we've asked representatives from the High Flying Owl Fund to also attend the meeting so they can make that particular presentation, because they do lots of good things, primarily for Chelmsford High School, and they are doing it for the academic games team, which will include some members from the high school, as well as the members from all of our schools. So, those are the major two items that we have, and groups coming at our meeting on the twenty-sixth.
So, a very exciting evening.
It should be.
Right, that's great. Okay, any other questions for Ms. Vouchier from the board? If not, we'll move on to item number seventeen, which is adjournment. Moved by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Raff. All in favor?
Aye.
This means adjournment. Good night.